Are you Tammy? Come on up.
It's gonna be here.
Yeah, it is mine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good work.
And statements.
Didn't get it behind that. Thank you, I appreciate you.
So the first item you have is the plaque. And then the second one is the GS statements or the GS mapping. One shows the easement box not checked and the other one shows the easement spot checked. Um, first of all, let me introduce myself. I'm Tammy Kitchen. I live at 15995 Goins Road. Um, I do have a little bit of an issue with Mr. Helms. I was on the phone with him. Um, I walked out to speak to the deputy he had just got there and I asked him to hold on a second. And I had him on speaker and he just hung up on me. I don't think that's very professional. Um, as elected official. And the deputy was even surprised. He's like, who was that? He hung up. So I think that shows me apology. Um, because that's not official for, I mean, it's not professional.
Well, and I will apologize to you, but I was walking into the commission meeting and
Okay.
And so I, you know, I'd already talked to your husband. I'd already talked to my guy. I'd already called the sheriff and so I knew any more conversations weren't going to go anywhere.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I was covered with the deputy and with you. I just didn't want, you know, any confrontations with it and I didn't even get a goodbye. It was just click.
Because you, you started talking to the deputy.
Right. I told you, hold on one second. You know, I was just kind of giving him an update, you know?
Like I said, at that point, I didn't think any further conversations were gonna help anything.
You could have told me, look, you know, look, I'll let you talk to him. I've got a meeting I gotta go to. That would have been respectful.
All right. I apologize for that. So they own a strip on this side of the road.
Yep.
And
We on the other side, right?
Yeah.
There's some of these over here somewhere.
Yes. And so there was a covert right here.
Yeah.
On this U.
Okay.
I don't believe there was any culverts in the very beginning. We, we paid for a covert we put in.
Yeah, we took out this covert here.
Right here.
Yes. We took out a covert there. Yes. And there's still a covert here.
That's the one we paid to put in.
Correct. And so what I did the other day is I had my guys go ahead and put this covert back in.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I think it's still on, it's still on our county right away and
There's no right of ways. There's no easement.
Okay. Here's the, because here's, here's the issue that, that I don't, I don't think you guys understand. I mean, your husband's told me all we own is the dirt on top. You guys own the county road.
That's what we were told by Mr. Mahew.
Oh.
And that's what we were told by him.
And, you know, and so, um, so I've printed that off, which establishes that this has been a county road for 50 years that I know of. It's been maintained. I mean, it's
There's no record of it.
Okay, there doesn't have to be a record of it. I mean, it's, this is the state statutes which designate it's a county road. Um, we do get state funding for it, everything, and we have a, and then the other statute gives us a right of way from 15 feet from the middle of the county road.
Okay.
And so if we want to put a covert in our legal right of way, we can put a covert
Without even notifying the landowner.
Yeah, I mean, it's in our right of way. I mean, we don't, I mean, if we're pulling ditches or if we're cutting brush, I mean, if we're doing work on our right of way, I mean, we can't, I mean, I wish we had the time. I wish we had the time to call every landowner and call and say, we're pulling ditches today. We're doing this today. We're doing that today. We just, we just don't have the time of that.
You say you maintain it, correct?
Yes.
We have videos of the, the grader going by lifting his blade right at our road and putting it down at the end of our property.
Okay.
You know, I, you know.
Do you want me to, do you want me, while we're public, do you want me to explain why our guys are frustrated with, with this?
Sure.
I mean, your husband, he thinks he owns the road.
We were told we did.
He's threatened to put, fence the road off. He has criminal charges for
That doesn't have anything to do with this right here.
It is, it has criminal charges for
It doesn't have anything to do with this right here.
Over this property dispute and so my guys just don't want to deal with your husband.
Yeah, well, I understand that. I went out there and they were rude to me.
You know, I mean, so
You know, and, and I begged you to do the right thing.
The right thing, the right thing was to put that covert back in. And so, so now we're back to where we need to be.
Okay.
Okay.
Y'all need to be.
If you guys want to pay for a survey,
We already did.
We'll split it with you to determine our right of way.
That's what I gave you.
I understand that, but you're, the survey doesn't have our 15 foot right of way on this.
Okay, he was the, um, Pulaski County surveyor.
Correct.
He's supposed to put all that in there.
Correct.
And he said, there is not one.
They, there, there isn't an established, that's, you know, since I've been commissioned, I've had people that own river property tell us, we can't go on their property because it's a river road. You know, they own both sides of the road. I mean, constantly, you know, we don't have a deed or an easement for every county road in the county. There's 425 county roads in the county. If we had deeds or easements for every county road, there'd be a stack this high. And so that's why those statutes have been created that establish a county road. And those statutes state what the commission has power over the county roads. That other statute on the back says how county road is established and why it's established and the maintenance that goes into it. And then the next statute gives us the right of way of 15 feet from the center of the county road. And so, uh, I think the issue is, uh, you got us in the, in the middle and I didn't fully understand what was going on when this was taken out. You guys got us in the middle of a neighborhood dispute that you don't want your neighbor to have a circle drive.
No, that ain't got nothing to do with it.
You guys wanted that covert taken out.
They told you. I got that one, but no, so.
And so we, we, we went back in on our county right of way. And we've put that covert back in.
Okay, you want to know why we took, why we had the ditch cut and why we put in a covert in on the other part of their property? We only have to allow them one access over our property line because we go past, our property line goes past the 15 feet. Okay, so we only have to allow them one access to that place. We did. We paid for it. We put it in. We had that ditch dug because they're sewer and we went to EPA, everybody. And it leaked all the way into the, to the ditch, what little bit of a ditch there was. And it leaked all the way over into our front yard, right to our front door. The sewer stank. It was awful. That's why we put that covert in. We didn't put it in to be vindictive. That we don't want them to have a circle drive. That ain't got nothing to do with it. We did it for the proper drainage because it wasn't never being cut on through because they didn't have a covert there. If it was, it was smashed because they had to dip down into the ditch to come out. That's why we put the covert in. So they're giving you misinformation.
So now we're back to where we were. And so like I said, if, if you guys, if you will allow somebody to go out there and measure to see where our right of way is, uh, you know, I believe we're within our right of way to put that covert back in. It was an existing covert. We put it back in.
Okay, so then that brings us to where we're at now. We still own part of that. You, you may own enough to
Okay, that's, that's between you and your neighbors.
And then we will put a cable up.
Okay, that's between
And that's a waste of taxpayer, taxpayers' money.
But that's, but, but that's just it. I mean, that's between you and your neighbors.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the county will do its obligation. We've done, and so we're gonna stay out of any kind of neighborhood dispute.
And, and I don't blame you. I really don't, you know, but I just, I kind of felt like you guys were, because my husband had his issues, that was given me the, that's the property line.
Yeah, the property line, when you're back here.
Yeah, but we're talking about the other side of the road.
I know.
It's on the other side of the blue.
Yeah. Yeah. So I understand, you know, and so like I said, that's between you and your neighbor. If you want to put up a cable on your side, you put up cable on your side.
Right.
But the county's back to where
Yeah, I was just looking at it. I mean, you're wasting our taxpayers' money by putting that covert in just because they want their circle driveway back if that's the way you want to put it.
Yeah, and like I said, that, that may be the, but I think we, we should have, if looking back on it now, if I knew, you know, we should have just
How long was that circle drive been there?
Long as I remember.
It's there. You got it. It's bad.
Yeah. And so that's, that's where, that's where I was coming from, you know?
But we would appreciate it if we'd have been contacted. You know, we contacted y'all and told you that the problem why we were putting the covert in and why were we cutting that ditch? And then they decided they want something back. So, you know, we weren't even like considered. You know, so I mean, that was our original reasoning was because of the sewer. And we have documents that we have constantly, constantly tried to get ahold of somebody to get something done about it because we were told, and this is just from the people that finally started coming and pumping it out, that they were, the two houses on that set, that system was too much. That's none of my business. I really don't care. My problem, we did, we did, we called countless people. You know, nothing could ever get done. So that's when we went in and took the covert, put a new one in at our expense for them to be able to access to their property and have the ditch cut. Now, we legitimately were doing what we were helping our own home. Because that stuff was leaking all the way to the house, hitting our drain or, what do you call them, French drains?
Yeah.
And running right alongside of the house. And it's I, it was, I mean, it was awful. It's worse than a, a lagoon. It was, you know? Then we had to stop the people from coming to pump because they were just pumping out the water on top of the ground. You know, that was a whole nother situation and they quit doing that finally. On that part. So, so you're just gonna leave the covert there? Is that your final words? So it don't matter. I, I just figured I'd give you all something that
Yeah.
Information that Right, right.
And if you want to go ahead and look those over and, and like I said, if you guys, uh, if you
Well, I mean, I, like you said, it looks like that we're just gonna have to go back to do, you know, as a landlord.
Yeah, and I mean, I would just, yeah, I would just say, you know, do your best, do your best to yeah, do your best to get along with your neighbors.
Well, we do. We try, you know, but every time we turn around, they're throwing something at us.
It's happened down the road, both like the judge and we see that that's been there over X amount of years. It's gonna stay the way it is.
But they have to have permission to cross our property except for one spot.
Been there for a long period of time, no.
That's in the statute.
I know.
That's in our, on our ends of the statute.
Establishing driven for X amount of time, it changes that. We run into that.
So, well, our property is our property though.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's gonna be the bottom line, you know? Alright, so you said you would do the survey?
Well, I mean, it says in there if you'll pay half of it with us.
And how much is it?
Oh, I don't know what it would be. I mean, we can, I can get ahold of Mahew and see. You know, it doesn't have to be a full, I mean, we're just talking about the right of way type thing, you know?
Would he have had to come off of that with our, our, um, survey? To find the middle of that road before he could go to the other side of that road?
No, well, I mean,
My question is, is it partially already done?
My understanding by reading the statute, because the center of that road can change over years. It can go this way. It can go this way. So what, by understanding by reading the statute, it's the current placement of the road. So it would be 15 feet both sides of the road.
Right.
And so, uh, you know, what happens if our 15 feet's over in your yard? On your side?
Right.
I mean, and we get the grader in there and make a ditch and everything else. Are you, are you guys okay with that?
Uh, as long as you don't hit my house. I mean, because evidently like he's saying, our circle driveway is, it's, it's, it's there.
Right.
It's been there for years.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so you can't you know, I mean, he said the same thing. So you couldn't cut my yard.
Right.
So okay, um, oh, can I have a copy of the minutes and stuff?
Oh, he wants to print it out, yeah. Leave me, uh, leave me your phone number or email and I can send you a copy of it.
Okay, do you have a?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna shut the door off. Okay.
Alright Tammy, thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Nice, what is stuff today?
New order.
Yep.
I found that's always missed that one. The single one. Instead balance sheet somewhere in the highway together.
I don't think so, Mike. Appreciate you.
I teach you to sign for him.
Have your name made right.
I really don't, but. The other option.
Oh, that miss is mine. That's my pin too. They're a dollar a dozen. Uh, this is your budget. This is your highway H net and then your road and bridge net budget. It's in there somewhere.
So this is all for us to keep.
I guess. It's all for you to work on your budget.
Yeah, I'll stop seeing you.
She ain't gonna part with that. You know, she usually trades every two years. She refuses to give this one up. She likes the gas mileage and that one gets on the highway. We went from here to Biscayne, Michigan on one thing again. It gets the upper, upper high twenties on the highway. For the ten speed transmission in that four sixty eight motor. Man, it just, you can go forever with it. And that's strange, cause she was always a sports car person, Corvus all of her life, sports car. But when I had my first Suburban, she drove it, she quit driving her car and I go, I thought you was. She goes, I like where I can see all the way around this thing and I'm up in the air and I can see. And ever since then. It's been suburban, urban, suburban.
Too stinking expensive.
Especially used, you know, I, I got a half prime. I was like, I look up a new one, I go, yeah, 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 no way, I'm, that's more than what I paid for my house. And good.
One of the guys is looking for a used truck and. They got two hundred thousand miles on them and they still want thirty and forty thousand.
Oh, yeah?
Like, holy smokes.
There's just.
We go try to trade that into a D.
Your van down there was, wanted to be seventy some dollars miles on it. I'm trying to sell for seventeen.
At that point, it ain't worth what they're gonna give you on it.
I got two Apollos I want to sell too, boys. They got about two hundred thousand miles a piece on them.
I don't think we. Good price. I don't think we can pull a rock in an Apollonia.
Couldn't have banned though.
A property owner, they think we. I don't need a ditch, dude, that thing looks deep.
Oh, with, you can park a dump truck in it.
That's what I thought. It looked like it. But they bought the house and they think the county is responsible for it. It's not county property.
Yeah, with the bad, it's a glacial hill. And at the very end of that.
Off the highway over there.
It's eight foot wide.
Then they sent us a certified letter, but it went to the fire department. The fire department said on it. Signed for it. The fire, the fire department signed for it. It's set down for a while before you got there. Yeah, it went to the fire department. They signed for it and set up there for a while. I can tell you that circle drives, it will give you, if it's a covert in there, it'll still be open. She can take it to court. I can tell you what's gonna happen.
That's the first time ever I've heard.
It's gonna stay the way it is.
EPA, if we had time to help clinic or anything, not hammer down on somebody for leaking sewage.
If it was leaking sewage, I guarantee a DNR would have slapped them with a ten thousand dollar day fine until it was taken care of.
I know, I've been.
They'll put dye in that and watch where it goes. I've seen it happen many times. They'll put dye in it up there and they'll watch and see where it surfaces. Wherever it surfaces, buddy, if it surfaces, you're gonna be responsible. It's stuff like neon. It look like come up a nuclear reactor center. It just green glow.
I put some of that in my veins every day.
Man, I never see that stuff work. I mean, it, it, it will appear. If it's, if it's got a leak coming out somewhere, you will find it.
Yeah.
The one that this is in question?
No, it's the other neighbor down the road.
Did you see where your, where your even goes down the grass? You could cut that ditch all the way back down into their yard. But you don't do that. And there's no reason for you to do that. But if it ever has to be, you could do that. Boy, you try that and watch what happens.
Oh, no, that's.
Even though you have the right.
I said, I don't, I don't, since I've been here, I've been dealing with people that think they own the county roads. Because the property line goes over.
Well, what I had years ago that, well, Eastern had, that guy put up. Uh, what do you call it, rods for concrete, uh, rebar? He put rebar about in the road. Almost as long as this table out the road around the corner. So that's my property and he spray painted purple. And I, he wanted that road fixed down there and I said, I, he called me and I said, I'll tell you what. If somebody runs over one of them in the county road, and I have you saying that you put them in there. You'll be responsible for any damage to that vehicle, or whoever runs over them, punctures it, transmission, oil, whatever. You will pay for it. You, I guarantee you'll end up paying for it. If you wanna talk, you pull them down, you give me a call, then we'll see what you can do to fix your problem. Letting to that guy, he called me, he goes, I pulled them. That's what I had Ricky side go over, because really there was too much tension already built up between. The east side and that landowner. So I sent the west side over. It worked, it worked.
If you look at the, uh, the survey, where I live back in there. The, uh, the gravel road, the county road that goes down behind my house. The two property lines actually meet in the middle of the road. And the survey actually states in there that my property begins in the middle of the road and goes out. But, uh, the county, uh, right of way or, yeah, right of way, you can see on there. Also, but then the count, the, uh, the two property lines actually meet in the middle of the road. And they were all that way for years.
You know, the corner where the stop sign is about your, I own to the middle of the intersection out there is my pin for my property.
Yeah.
It runs down Carter Street this way. It cuts off half of Boil Valley, out in the asphalt around.
Yeah, but if you, even if you look at the state, you know, like I forty four, we.
But that's where my property pin.
There on I forty four, it goes all the way up to about twenty feet off the edge of the interstate. But then if you look, you've got the states.
Right away.
Uh, right of way, um, property lines, their signs, their markers go all the way back, you know, about twenty feet.
Yeah.
Into it, off of the other way. And if you put anything up on a state line, they don't even ask. They don't even say nothing. They just come out there and tear it down.
It won't be there very long.
No.
Even campaign signs. If you get, if you get one leg of a sign. Biggest one's right there on seventeen going towards Crocker. Ooh.
Yeah.
I had one, one time that was that far into the spinger either way. He told me I had to pull that thing and move it around and slide them.
I've, I've seen.
That was that far in.
I've seen them take fences. They'll just.
And it goes back twenty five feet on a lot of that, all the way mainly to the fence of roads. In some points, it goes all the way back to utility poles that are up here.
And sometimes on a corner, they've got more.
Yeah.
Than in a straight stretch.
Yeah.
Like out here by Threkkles, a big wide corner. Uh, that guy built a privacy fence one time and they seen him putting it up. And they stopped and they said, hey, you might wanna have those come survey this, show you where the fence needs to go. And he got mad and started cursing at them and told them he'd build the fence and they're like, knock yourself out. Well, he built the fence and then after it was done, they took the state trooper out there and the measuring team and. They said, right there, it's gotta come down from here up there. And then he got mad and took a sledgehammer and demolished his fence. But they tried to save him the pain and suffering, but sure, he told him that he was God and it'd go where he wanted it. And that's where it would be and. Then he tore his fence up, damaged, just damaged all the material that he had over this. I don't know.
We had a realtor in the subdivision that we had over there that was, uh, each, each lot was just under an acre. Uh, this was years ago, but, uh, under an acre at the time. And, uh, the house had sold two or three times military, you know, it sold two or three times. Well, one of the realtors had told one of the people that it was a full acre. So he come in and, uh, about eight feet into the neighbor's yard and built a chain link fence. And the neighbor behind him come out and told him, it's like, that's not, you know, it wasn't the neighbor he built onto, it was the other one. He's like, that's not where the line is. This is the line. He's like, nope, he told me out of full acre, so I measured out a full acre.
I do it works.
Yeah. And the bad thing is, is the pins are still there. The physical pins are still there.
Yeah. Bind out there in the asphalt. They go, look like one of them, they put those big circus pants on, you know, about that big in the asphalt.
Well, all these are, these are the older ones that are rebarbed.
I said, okay. They go, so you wanna be responsible for the asphalt out there?
No, you wanna put your swimming pool out there.
But, no.
Do you have any more salt to leave?
Then I thought I was gonna put a toll road up around my house.
No, I think we're done.
But I think if he was gonna bring you, you know.
I think he's got his gun. You know, like I always said, it's a city east. Salt and gravel gonna go bad if you got it in. You never know if a guy gets in a bind and after you got bad weather, then it's hard to get.
They were three feet inside. Cause I still on three feet of my fence. Oh, so he signed. That way, I told him to take that fence down and move it back three, they're gonna move back three. Cause if I didn't do that down the road, I lose.
Well, you know, the, uh, neighborhood in Florida where I guess back in the nineteen thirties or forties, they put a big. Giant water main going through, uh, middle of nowhere at the time, well. And apparently the eighties, they decided to build a whole subdivision over it. But some angles, uh, on the property deeds and on all the paperwork, the right of way was forgotten about. Until one day, one of the guys came through and they had to work on the line and they had to tear down his garage, cause. His house went up, and this is like twenty feet down. So no one even knew when they built it. They didn't dig twenty.
You know how many of them like that around here? Mid Missouri Motors, the city main goes right through the middle of their building.
Oh, wait, yeah. So if you gotta fix the main, I mean.
Right through the showroom floors, where's that?
Right on the Walkland property. He built on top of one of.
You go up through there, there's one on W Highway that runs diagonally across people's property and they can't build all that, cause the mains there.
Trying to get Florida, they didn't know. Around here, they do and didn't care.
Yeah, it's like that all over around Missouri.
I heard stories.
Lanesville, right over here where the storage units are. The city, uh, water and sewer run right underneath those. Storage unit.
Well, my property is just filled from Fort Leonard Wood for about, I don't know how far it goes, but it's probably ten feet of just debris. That they took off Fortwood back years ago from old barracks and dumped them and they covered it with dirt.
Before building inspections and things like that, people just built. That was the problem.
I remember there, they used to take old cars that was raised for hours. Happened back in the fifties when they first started the city and they would create, you know, limo out property and fill it that way. I'm not sure that is, but I almost believe some of that. There's parts.
I almost said that.
Well, I'll, I'll just catch you up. It's alright.
Yeah, the lower one?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I know the company was doing the excavating in there and they were pulling parts out of there.
Well, he's buried under the giant stadium.
I don't think anybody knows.
Well, I can tell you right now, you know where the field's probably is.
Leave this for the next.
You know, with a hat and everything on it.
So they gotta lower that gas bank going to Fort Leonard Wood on the right side of the road, because all that property from the old Fortwood, all the salvage and fields property. They gotta lower that, they're gonna lower that. But to do that, they gotta, that whole gas main runs right underneath that natural gas. Going to Fortwood. They told me what size pipe it was. It was a big pipe. It's a lot of money in cats sitting in that pipe, so I gotta.
Size is the, uh, the northern pipeline. Is it an eight inch or a?
What size of the natural gas going on the post? Is that like a six inch or an eight? What do they usually run on something like that?
Well, one, one of the rivers was smaller than the one going out here.
The one going to post is a big one, they said.
Yeah, there, here and it feeds that way. I think the. That's a gas line that goes up north, right? That's what I was always told. That was the one comes through Crocker there on U Highway.
Oh, that's how the main, yeah. Well, it's, yeah.
Is it the ever, is it the everything line?
It's more or less everything, yeah.
Okay. Well, I know, I know that they said that if they ever had, if it had. Gas in it and it blew, that it would burn and they shut it off at the last place. It would burn for. Several, several hours before.
Raiders would hit it down there.
Yeah.
And they set it off and it burnt. I mean, they killed it at, I think, Betel and.
Oh, yeah.
Or they killed it.
Yeah.
And it burnt for days.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the line.
But you, yeah, but that one, they, they'll run a cleaning agent through it. And they'll run like food.
I know who's running the grater when they hit that one.
Is that the gas line I never knew about?
Yes.
Yeah, so, they said it was kind of a fall day and said he had the door open, but when he hit that, the gas got on him. And he said he's about to freeze. Said he. They said it was kind of a fall day and said he had the door open, said when he hit that, his gas got on him and he said he's about to freeze, said he took off. Stripping clothes, but. So they evacuated everybody and sent a helicopter down out there and set it off with a flare. Armed it off.
That I hit and broke it, so.
If I would have caught on fire in the mountain.
He was a meeting somewhere, I gotta talk to Wayne, well, they're in a panic too. I guess the grader was going through there.
By the license still though, like.
You can see the gas line, he's just on the very top edge of it, cleared it.
Yeah.
I was like. They kept digging down further on that left foot, make us like that.
We got a gas valve on the Porter Road sticking up out of that wind room.
Really?
We got a valve sticking up and it's.
It's not.
No, it's, it's city Richmond's been out there. Three or four times and keeps it painted, but it's halfway up a gravel hill on the left hand side.
Down here?
Yeah.
On the dye side?
Yeah.
Really, well, Charlie went and cleared all there. Pushed his fence back that time.
Yeah, it's, there's one there.
Pushed that first fence all the way down to the second fence, I go, Charlie, you talk to the dyes.
That vein.
Wow, that's his fence down there, and I'm like.
Yeah, there's, there's a gas valve out there.
I'll never forget that.
And over in.
He called me back, I'm like, what are you guys doing, man?
Over in Big Tony, we've got a, uh, they say, they say it's not a use, but we've got a exposed gas line in the ditch over there about a six or eight inch.
Look how way to be the road up there.
Yeah, I don't.
Why?
I've seen somebody take a, a propane tank before, take a cut, torch it, cut it in half and I look at him and think.
Oh, man.
I just. We've had the valve off of it for two or three years.
Still.
Oh, yeah.
Rocket ship to the moon.
Stories people. Metal barrels up and.
Thing will make it out the door for you.
Yeah. And I've seen people weld, uh, gas tanks off of vehicles, but they either put exhaust tubes in it or fill it with water and weld it.
Yep, that's what I've seen do motorcycle thing.
Yeah.
Just fill them with water or something and.
Yeah.
Weld them that way.
Yeah.
I think you can blow, have constant air blowing through them too.
Oh, yeah.
That may not be true, I'm not gonna try it either.
I used to see him do, uh. They'd hook up the exhaust.
Off the vehicle, yeah, either put exhaust or fill it with water, yeah.
Huh. And then they just sit there and weld on it.
Nerves are steel, I guess. Not, uh.
Seen videos on. In the old empty one, they also gasoline on it, throw it in the buddies and one of their sitting in the crouches, just.
Yeah. Eddie, there's a lot of things in this world that's ain't even like a split rim tire.
Oh, man.
Yeah, they. Those are not to be messed with either.
No.
My neighbor's still got an old truck that he uses on his property that still has, he's got. A fork, well, he's got the four back ones on, he got newer rims for the front, but he's still trying to find.
The ones for the rear.
Duelies, because I guess the duels are kind of a special fit, it's like a seventy one Ford. And he can only get, find a split rim, they, I guess they'll make a modern. Equivalent, he hooks a chain and tight around now when he works on them and everything, so.
Rather put them in a cage or set a bucket down on top of them for a loader or something, because. I've seen them come off and it's.
Oh, yeah.
You don't be around that.
No.
They hook the chain, so if they come apart, they only can go.
I heard years ago they had a bad accident with one of them in the tire shop in Vienna. Had it on a tire changer. And the ring went through the roof of the building. But, yeah, uh, that's just leaving it there, but it was a horrible.
Yeah.
Horrible accident, but, and the person fixing the tire just didn't know nothing about it.
When the. I've seen the, of course, you know, you have a. Truck burning on the interstate or something like that, entire load.
Yeah.
Whatever. Went to one of them one time and, uh, the, uh, the bearing burned up and let go.
Yeah.
And the duals went off into the, into somebody's yard. And the lady come out there with a fire hose to, or with a water hose to, to put it out, you know, like yelling. I'm putting it out, get.
We had a bearing go out on one of our low boys the other day, lost both duals off of it. Thank God nobody was hurt, didn't. Didn't cause no damage to nothing or nobody or.
I had one sixty five there on the interstate, or sixty five in Springfield. Headed northbound and southbound, they had, uh, set of duals come off of a, off a truck. Hit that center partition and it landed right in the middle of her car.
Yeah.
Just crushed right in the middle of her car.
Remember Renelli's out there on forty four when it used to wrap through Fort Worth? That tractor trailer lost that set of duals and it bounced, hit the ditch bouncing, went right through the roof of the building.
I've got two witnesses of this, we just got, I had a couple of guys with me and we was headed in my personal truck at forty four. Truck coming out is in the opposite lane, he lost a set of duals off his trailer and when that, the brakes, everything come out of it, they separated. Here they come, right at us. And I'm like, oh my God, looking there like, what are you gonna, and everybody screaming, I'm looking in the mirrors for traffic. And I jerked over and one went behind us and I had to look in the mirror and signal and whip back over and the other one bounced and went right over the cab of the truck. And they went down, they went down over Route sixty six toward Devil's Elbow, don't know where they went.
What happened to that red, red Ford that used to be road and ridge?
Yeah.
I was driving in at Columbia Police Commission's stop, it's a wrecking. And a rod come off that flatbed and it hit seventy, it bounced, I can just see it in slow motion coming. Ricky went as far as he could that way, I went like this and Lenny disappeared in the backseat, he went to the seat, I guess. But it hit right on the windshield wiper. It destroyed the windshield wiper thing. And then it flipped and hit the very roof, put that dent right above the glass of the roof and went up.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna come right through the windshield.
I was, when I was working for the Marine, towing a boat to a boat chill one time, St. Louis, I pulled off there on two seventy and there was a debris truck. One of the constructions or whatever, and he let go of a rock. Come off the back of that thing, it probably two inch or whatever, hit square in the middle of the windshield and that rock ended up.